All right, I've got seven o'clock. We call this to order. Everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a review of the agenda. Anybody have anything on the agenda they'd like to talk about? The only thing I'd like to bring up is under new business, we have waterfront ordinances and it was my understanding we're gonna deal with that at our next special meeting. Yeah?
Bob, Dylan. Thing I'd like to add about the waterfront ordinances is I've heard a lot of people talking about it and kind of upset that we're going forward with this at a time when most of the, as it was said to me, most of the waterfront homeowners are not here and they think that we should move it back to a time in the summer when they are here.
Like June or something?
That's what was mentioned at the meeting. They just said when they were here.
I think that we've been discussing this for almost two years.
Two years, yeah.
And I think that we have gotten this far. I think that we need to proceed forward with it. It's been two years. It's been a lot of township, time and money and effort put into this. If they were that concerned in the two years they won't take the meetings, why not? I mean, it's been, they've known that it's been going on.
Is it appropriate for public comment now?
Uh... We haven't opened public comment yet. We're just reviewing the agenda real quick. So...
It was voiced to me a couple of different times by at least three different people that they thought it was, it would be more appropriate if we did it at a different time. I'm just reporting what I heard.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I can see it both ways.
I think we just heard "both ways." Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No, I'm just gonna add on, so I'll, you know where I stand.
I know. I kinda figured, but... Is... So we wanna keep going, or you wanna make a motion to delay it?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the October 24th meeting over waterfront ordinance updates until the springtime of 2018. No.
No.
Okay. I think we already know where that would go if we voted, so... Okay.
But I agree with your original point. I don't think there's a particular reason for us to go over this again since the, even the changes that the attorney suggested really were not substantive.
Yeah.
Which clarifying and, you know, making things consistent. So I would say that we don't really need that and we'll have plenty of time to make a meeting before.
I would prefer to strike that from today's meeting. If anybody in the public wants to comment, I'd be more than happy to listen to them, but you guys are okay with it?
Well, I think we all would be interested in listening to them, not just you.
I meant, do you wanna keep it on the agenda for today, or can we pull it from the agenda for today?
I think we've got the public meeting is set up for...
The 24th?
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So I think we'll just...
Okay, strike that for today.
Hey, guys.
Ed?
Bob.
Okay, review of the agenda. Any declarations of conflict of interest? No? Okay. And the reason why we're here tonight, for a public hearing. For Toy Box, for Frontier Boats. Larry, would you mind telling about your finding of facts for the... Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. Huh? Cherry?
Okay, uh, the, this was originally approved by the A. Stock planning commission in 2007. It was gonna be two buildings that would, each building would have seven units. It was used for boat storage, or for storage with office space provided and a, I guess, lounge area. And the ordinance also, or the action of the planning commission was very specific in terms of uses as stated were not allowed to occur. And those included, and I can just kind of paraphrase, certainly in the materials that you were provided with, it's potentially excluded automotive repair work or bodywork and mechanical work as well as marine bodywork and mechanical work. In 2011, an issue came, or the request was made to the A. Stock planning commission to consider allowing boat construction on the premises, and that was sent out by the planning commission at that time. Where we are at today, the property has not changed in size. It's a little over two and a half acres in size. Property is owned C2 commercial. Again, it's the same approval that took place in 2007 still exists today with the maximum of two buildings with seven units in each building. As of this time, one building has been constructed which contains seven units. The, again, and also in the motion to approve the site plan in 2007, one of the conditions imposed was no hazardous materials shall be stored, discharged, dispensed, released, or disposed of from any unit within the proposed development. And then again, as I indicated, the, there were certain uses that are specifically excluded, and that also included residential and retail sales and manufacturing. The condominium documents that have been filed with the Carrollway County Registered Deeds also basically contain the same restrictions that the planning commission had put on in 2007. The Health Department of Northwest Michigan, in their approval in 2007, stated all units are restricted to storage and limited commercial office use only. I did speak with Mike Jones last Thursday. He had just gone back from vacation, or being out of town for a week and a half or so. So I did not have a chance to get anything specifically in writing, although he did email me basically the restrictions that the Health Department put on the, on the property and the Suffolk Hank and Tile Field, which were identical to what you have in your packet. It was basically, he resented me the Health Department restrictions in 2007. He did state that his concern is that they may, even though the Suffolk Waste Disposal System was constructed to handle 14 units, he believes they may be close or potentially exceeding the limitations in terms of the volume of material. And he said that, from his standpoint, before they would consider allowing any additional uses or changes of uses, they would want to have an evaluation performed to see what the, what type of quantities of F1 are going into the Suffolk Waste Disposal System. The, the application that was submitted, the applicant is requesting the ability to, or to allow carpentry to occur in the units. I did ask the, the application listed the seven existing units by tax ID number. At the pre-application conference, the owner of the property, Ken Koss, indicated that, that that, he actually would like that for all 14 units at such point in time as the remaining seven units are constructed. The applicant does own six of the seven units that are currently constructed. I've not heard anything from the owner of the seventh unit as to whether or not he desires to have the ability or be allowed the ability to engage in carpentry uses in his unit. The, also I did encourage the planning commission members to take a look at the finding of fact from the May 17th, 2011 planning commission meeting for additional information that might be worthwhile considering in the findings of fact. You were provided a copy of that and the, and the rather volume of material that was provided to you, I didn't see a whole lot of sense in spending, you know, considerable amount of time re-typing something that you already had. So the, again, the activities that were initially approved by the planning commission were for, primarily for storage and office space and ancillary lounge area. Again, with prohibited being, the use of prohibited being residential, retail sales, manufacturing, any activities which emit fumes, odors, noise. And then they also excluded commercial automobile/marine body shop operations, commercial automobile/marine mechanical repair operations, paint shop, shops recycling operations, or similar business kind of ground. So that's, that's kind of the background and some preliminary findings of fact. Again, you may wish to, when you get to that point in your meeting where you're discussing what action you would like to take or what you're, you are going to adopt as you're finding a fact, you would wanna take a look at the 2011 planning commission minutes to see if there are additional items in there that you would like to add to this.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Larry? All right, thanks Larry. Okay. Okay. Pat would like everybody to know that we're tape recording this evening. And then if we could hear from the applicants, just wondering what you guys have been doing for 10 years in there, how you guys handle noise, what your hours are.
Well, if you were willing to speak first, then I could then give a little time to, to drive. I'm Ken Koss. I own the property. William, his company's been my tenant for almost 10 years. Doing the same thing. He repairs classic wooden boats. Our point here tonight is just to ground in the existing zoning code in approval, special use permit for William to do what he's already been doing for this many years. It's not, we're not disputing any disconnect between what the special use permit granted to us 10 years ago says and, and his current use. There's no dispute there. There's a disconnect and we gotta fix it. The good thing is, there is a way to fix it, and it's using the zoning code as it's currently written. And specifically, item number H under that, you know, whatever the section I cited in my letter, it refers specifically to the use for carpentry and plumbing for services related to those kinds of trades. And then for an office that would also relate to that kind of use. There is no better description than what you find in the zoning code for what it is that William does in units six and seven. We have a way of fixing a problem that shouldn't have existed as long as it has. And for that, I would apologize, to be honest. After we got through the whole procedure approvals 10 years ago, you may recall the recession we had. Everybody was anxious at the time to do what they had to stay in business. I was nothing like anybody else. I wasn't worried particularly about documents that I hadn't even looked at for quite a while. And I signed a lease with a guy who brought in a business and brought jobs to the area. I hope you understand that, that in the real world, that's the way it sometimes happens. And that's why we're here today, to fix it. And it's good that we have a method to do so. I would like to address just, you know, one other thing, and that is, whatever suspicions might have arisen in your mind hearing that Mike Jones had reservation spot this or that, I would like to put the rest... For one thing, Mike, Mike Jones can have no information whatsoever at his disposal right now to make any kind of judgment that he, that might have been implied in Larry's statement there. He has no concept of how many times the toilets get flushed over at North Star, commercial condominiums. It's impossible for him to know that. It is a very lightly used facility. The parking lot is vacant almost all day every day. The only active business in the place is maintenance. So, you know, I think the reality of our situation here should not raise suspicions about somehow that we're overusing or overtaxing a system that I built twice the size that was required under the approvals that Mike Jones offered us at the time, twice the size, so it can get out of the way and heavy build to full fill it, okay? So if it's capacity he's worried about being a problem. So that was the only other thing that stuck in my mind about whatever Larry had to tell you. Everything else, I'd agree entirely with what he had to say. Certainly here to answer whatever questions you might have. And I should let William and his wife a chance to explain to you what it is they do.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm William, the owner of Frontier Classics. My wife, Amy, co-owner of Frontier Classics, have some children, Julianne, Neil, do my work with Brad for... What's the name again? Can you start? That's it. I got a short problem I'm gonna ask you. I need to read my statement, so, thank you.
Hi, good evening. And you all have a copy of this in front of you. It's entitled Frontier Classics. One of this is, oh, and I also have, this picture was just taken today of what's going on down at the two units that we occupy. We had extended invitation through Bob Jess for all of you to come and visit our site, which we hope we took the opportunity to do because sometimes fear of the unknown is just that, fear of... And I also wanted to say also that this is a new special use permit application and really shouldn't be equated with the 2011 application that was included in your packet by the zoning administrator. That was for a boat building school, which has very different operations than what we are doing. So, so when I saw that in your packet, I was a little nervous about those findings of fact being equated to what we're doing tonight. Just to give you a little summary, Frontier Classics is a business dedicated to restoration and preservation of classic wooden boats and uses, and uses traditional carpentry methods. Nothing fancy, nothing high tech, just old fashioned carpentry methods. The company started renting two units at 09376 US Highway 31 in 2008, and we have now been operating in this location in Hayes Township for almost a decade. We regularly employ three to five individuals, depending on the season, and currently have four full-time employees, all with young children in the area, all families that are contributing economically to the area as well. Frontier Classics operates in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District of Hayes Township, as you know. This is a small district that runs along US Highway 31 and currently includes a neighboring veterinary clinic. The clinic and Frontier Classics have worked alongside one another for the entire time the company has been at this location, and the veterinary clinic has never had, made any complaints regarding Frontier Classics activities, and it supports the continued business in this location. During the nine years that Frontier Classics has been at this location, we have not received any kind of useless complaint whatsoever. Just some bullet facts also on the handout that we gave you that are important for you to consider. The Hayes Township zoning ordinance was updated effective October 31st, 2009 to include carpentry as and allowed special use in the C2 zoning district, and that's what we're doing, carpentry. Frontier Classics was advised on two separate occasions several years ago, we couldn't come up with the exact dates, but by a Hayes Township zoning administrator who inspected the business and the site and told us that our activities were acceptable at that time. The letter dated August 23rd, 2017 from Larry Sullivan, the zoning administrator, advising us of possible zoning ordinance violations was the first time that we had ever heard that or been made aware of that. In your zoning ordinance, obviously you're aware of the standards for granting a special use permit. And so I looked at those and just gave what the standards were and how Frontier Classics meets the standard for granting a special use permit. Number one, the land use, carpentry, isn't allowed land use in the C2 zoning district, and that's definitely for land. The business activities are compatible with the surrounding land uses. There is a minimal amount of modern chemicals and solvents used in its operation. There are no chemicals used in our daily operations that couldn't be found in the common household. A list of these chemicals are, one, marine spar varnish, two, marine paints, and three, solvents, which include paint thinner, acetone, and lacquer thinner. Like I said before, we are old school. We are remodeling boats that were built in the 1920s and 30s, and we use these same, the same system that they use back then. We don't have any modern chemicals or tools that are being used. We have not had any major spills of these chemicals in the 14 years that we have been in business. However, on occasion, we do have small spills of less than a few ounces, and when this occurs, we clean these spills with the solvents listed above and properly dispose of them in our dumpster. Our company does not involve any activities, processes, materials, or equipment that create any negative impact on the surrounding properties and does not add to the normal traffic of the site or create noise, smoke, fumes, layers, odors, or the accumulation of scrap material on the site as is referenced in your zoning ordinance, is that, that's what's necessary and that's exactly what we're doing. The business does not impose any special demands on fire, police, or other public resources of the township, and we have our waste disposed of weekly by a local waste management company. As Ken stated also, there is no scientific use that would be outside of the normal use that we are doing at this point. Our business, as I said also before, is very beneficial to the economic wellbeing of the community. Wooden boat restoration is one of the few, unfortunately, businesses in our northern Michigan area that even though we have a seasonal area, we're able to work year-round. We can employ our people in the winter because that's when we do a lot of our restoration on the boats. And that's the kind of business that we are fortunate enough to have, have started and is the kind of business that we would hope that Hayes Township would want to support and continue to, to support. Our business is compatible with the natural environment. Like I said, we don't involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment that create a negative impact on the environment of the township. No hazardous materials are stored, discharged, dispersed, or released, or disposed of from our business. And we're using the definition of hazardous materials as being substances or materials that are defined as hazardous by federal, state, or local environmental laws, ordinances, rules, or regulations. And the last thing that I was, what I wanted you to also consider again was just the families that are supported by our business and the impact that we have on the community as a whole. And we appreciate you taking consideration the importance of your decision tonight as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Then I guess next we go to special use permit. If we go to page 6-1, section 6.01, purpose. It is the purpose of this article to specify the procedures and requirements for the review of special land uses as specified in this ordinance. Uses classified as special land use are recognized as possessing unique characteristics relative to the location, design, size, public infrastructure needs, and other similar characteristics which require individual review and approval standards in order to safeguard the general health, safety, and welfare of the township. And if we go to standards for granting special use permits on page 6-2, V1-2. Number four, the planning commission shall approve or approve with conditions an application for special land use permit only upon finding that the proposed special land use complies with the following standards.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, there is a public hearing, and you've heard from the zoning administrator, you've heard from the applicant. At some point, it should be...
Open it to the public first? Okay.
Yeah, for a public comment, either for a con...
I apologize, this is my second time doing this. So I'd like to open it up for public comment.
I'll go. My name is Matthew Primal. My wife, Julie, Julie Sunprimal, are the owners of Bay Shore Animal Hospital who share a joining driveway with Mr. Koss' endeavor and William's business. I know I was here for the initial approval process and the special use denial for the boat building company. I would just wanna go on record in stating with the, with the shared driveway, one of the initial concerns in approving Ken's initial endeavor was the amount and volume of traffic coming in and out of the shared driveway on 31. That is very light at this point. Those two units that are occupied by this, by business, they're in before we even open, and I'm usually watching them take off after we've closed, and so there's very little volume going in and out on the highway, just to put that out there. And when it comes to noise and smell and that sort of thing, I will attest in fact that after 10 years, I've never had any concern as far as level of noise being produced by the, by the units, and those are the two closest units to our facility. So they've been good neighbors, quiet, and the volume's been very light in the way that we've had to coexist, so that's always been appreciated on my part. Thank you.
So you have no concerns with noise, smells, hours of operation?
Never seen, right, right. Noise has never been a concern. As far as spills, they're, they're two units empty right out onto the, onto the parking lot where there's a big drain, and so it's pretty good grade there. There are no stains. There's never been any large spill. I know when the first boat company was there, occasionally we would get some odors and things, and I'd go over there 'cause my kids bike and roll up late and things when they're not around the big parking lot there, and there, there's no residue or stains or things like that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just have a question. How far is this from any open water? And second, with respect to the disposal of waste, in, first of all, the chemicals that we use in terms of liquids left over, do you dispose of those with like a local company that picks them up and disposes them? Even though they're old school or still hazardous waste? And if you have any excess liquids, how do you deal with that?
How do we manage? We'll probably just whip it. So we have separate bags for the cans and stuff like that that might have residue in it, so we can waste.
And no, no volume of liquids remaining?
Oh, no, it's empty cans, so...
And how far are you from the water?
A hundred yards would be from the building, I believe.
Two.
But there's no drainage or anything where we go for it. There's a central drain that's in the middle of the parking lot, but there's no drainage in the facility.
They're the other side of the highway from Lake Michigan?
And if I may?
Yeah?
There's, there's quite a large berm between the actual structure that we're in and the highway. And then across from the highway, there's also a berm that, that is in front of the lake as well, so there are quite a lot of them. Landscape and...
If you have an excess, and it's a spill, how do you manage that?
Well, maybe I can explain best because I know the site. What, what you have there is, of course, the possibility of a spill occurring either inside or outside. Let's say it happened indoors. There are no floor drains. There is no drainage to a central location, so whatever he might spill on the floor inside gets wiped up, cleaned up because he has to use that surface.
Sure.
Sure.
And so he would dispose of whatever rags or whatever he used to put that through waste management. In terms of outside spillage, there is a parking lot, of course, this large parking area. That parking area has two drains. One drains to a basin on the west side of the property, to the south, and the other one drains to the basin that's on the east side of the property, to the south, adjoining the future building location. I'm there very frequently, several times a week, let's say, on average. And I watch my site, because I have every reason to. I have never, ever observed anything in the way of dead foliage, dead grass, anything within the drainage basins that we built in accordance with the site plan, anything that give me pause about any kind of destruction or poisonous materials being poured into either one of those drains in the parking area. So, I can say pretty unexplanably, it's been a real clean site.
Well, I'm not worried about intention or...
No, no, I'm probably... It's just the possibility of unintentional stuff. I have no evidence of anything either.
Well, I'm not asking for evidence.
No, I mean, hey, three of you, I mean, as you are in the business, we've never had any exterior spill factor. When you varnish, when you paint, it might be in the cup process of spill. The way we get control is use the solvents, wipe it out, put any proper garbage, dispose of it correctly. There's never exterior things that happen, we don't do anything out there.
And in terms of the volume of the chemicals used, are they delivered in quart, five gallons, eight gallons?
Quarts, basically. I wanted to put that in the perspective for everybody, that if you're envisioning 55-gallon drums of marine paint or spar varnish, we need to reorganize that, get on the same level. I do the ordering for the business most often, and when I order marine spar varnish, the unit size is quart, and I typically get in about two, and I'll order them on a Wednesday, and they're delivered Thursday morning, and they're gone by Friday morning.
That's important to know.
Yes, and the largest volume you'll ever see on the property would be one gallon, the one gallon size can that you're familiar with from Main Stores, Home Depot, whatnot. And once again, that's ordered in as needed. We don't like to store things, because we don't like to store things. We don't throw away liquids, because the varnish we use is $70 a quart, so we don't like to throw away money, and it's not the right way to handle it. So I wanted, just that we're all thinking about the same units of measurement, quarts, that big.
So, let me ask, you're just asking for a waiver, if there's conditions like you're not allowed to store chemicals on a boat in a small volume. If there's a restriction that prevents you from storing chemicals or ordering and using large volumes of chemicals, that would affect your business?
No, not large volumes or anything.
Or storage?
Yeah, we don't store it, it's...
So that restriction wouldn't impact you at all?
No, our capital's not high enough to have inventory or anything, that's why we do it daily.
Any other public comments?
I guess I can say very briefly, on a personal note, pertaining to what we do there, just to add on to what Annie said about the old style of things, the hand planes I own are over 100 years old. You're not going to see or hear a CNC mill buzzing around, you're not going to hear or see large pieces of equipment moving large things. Everything is done by hand with respect to the projects that we're working on and the history that we're preserving. A lot of times, a lot of staying in the shop is the opera that I play, and these two probably can't stand. From a personal standpoint, I have a son, I own a house, I pay a mortgage, I pay my taxes, and I've done so for over a decade. William's done the same, kids in school. Our employee here, Douglas, he has an expanding family, and his set down roots in his home shopping right now. This is not a fly-by-night, as you can see, in an area that provides many, many jobs but very few careers. This is a business that provides careers, provides stable employment, and provides a service to the community and to the surrounding area in a trade that is diminishing and disappearing very quickly, which is part of the reason why the business stays busy, because there's not many people doing what we do. And side note, I'm an avid fisherman, as is William. I spend as much time outside as I can, and the last thing I would do is jeopardize what makes the area that we live in so special, which is it's clean air, it's clean water, and the fact that there's not many people around here. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll shut it down to public comment then. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Susan.
I would just say that I know nothing about this business, and I'm so glad I'm here tonight to find out about these craftsmen and further applaud what you're doing. I think it's quite wonderful, and I guess I would feel that Hayes Township was kind of lucky to have you and your family here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Okay, close it down. So we already read the purpose for the special use. I'll read the standards for granting special use permits again. The planning commission shall approve or approve with conditions and application for a special land use permit only upon finding that the proposed special land use complies with the following standards. A, allowed special land use. The property subject to the application is located in a zoning district in which the proposed special land use is allowed. And I think that we've heard that carpentry is allowed on page 4-11, carpentry along with plumbing, electrical sales, service, and contracting offices. That would be letter H. Everybody agree with that up here?
Where are you, Bob, so I can know?
That was...
411.
411. H.
Page, right at the top, right? Yeah. Article four, page...
Second, 411, three, H, on page 4-11.
And then we'll go back to page 6-3, B, compatibility with adjacent land uses. Number one, the proposed use subject to a special use permit shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as not to diminish the opportunity for surrounding properties to be used and developed as zoned. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
So I'm just going to keep going through these, and I'll just ask you guys if you agree or have any questions. Number two, the proposed special land use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment that will create a sustainably negative impact on other conforming properties in the area by reasons of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or the accumulation of scrap materials that can be seen from any public road or seen from any adjacent land owned by another person. I think we heard from Matt that this falls in line with what it should be. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Three, if deemed necessary by the planning commission, the hours of operation that the special use is allowed to operate, be open or otherwise occur, shall be imposed as a condition of approval to ensure compatibility with the surrounding land uses.
Do you have an hours of operation?
Yeah, basically, it's between eight and nine in the morning until four or five at night. There'll be varies on the season.
Were there hours originally set?
In the original?
Original.
I don't recall seeing hours set anywhere in the original.
I think, same thing, everything...
I think it was because there was not an individual business operating at the time. I guess that never really came to light.
So just a question for everybody up here, if we do grant this, we want hours of operation for other businesses, if other businesses would be...
I would propose between eight and six.
I would support it.
You guys have any issues with that?
The only concern would be that sometimes we have a client whose boat breaks down, and we have to run to the shop and get some materials or something to go and help them at that time. So there are some variables that we have, amongst Bradford and Doug, you can probably speak more to this than I can, but I know that there are some unusual hours that sometimes, unfortunately, because I know we'll be at home on Sunday, and William will get a call that one of his clients needs help. I just wouldn't want us to violate any sort of hours of operation.
And also, I mean, to go off what you're saying various times, but it's not work that we have to do at the shop. It's that we got to go to the shop, grab tools, and go somewhere else. So it's not something that happens there, it's just that we have to go there to get what we need to go somewhere else.
Yeah, so that's not like it'd be nine o'clock at night, and all of a sudden you're working on a boat, or just grabbing something, yeah.
It's something, it's a service provided in a different area, so I have to go there.
I would certainly support that, supporting some level of hours of operation, because although this has not been issued, if we're looking to apply this to all 14 potential units, having that in place would be wonderful.
Okay.
So, is eight and six, given where you're located, that work with you?
Right, yeah. If that doesn't cause hardship on them at this point, then I'm all for it.
No, but just the one thing is, what does that include, like, can we not go to the shop and grab our tools?
No, you didn't, no. It means that you're not actually doing the work that you do in the shop during that time.
It better be valuable hour.
You better talk to William about that.
If I made a box for my mom for Christmas, that's not, okay, that doesn't contribute to the account.
I think we're talking normal hours of operation.
Yeah, well, within our parameters.
We run a bowyard, and the bowyard goes from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night, and then the sinking boat comes in at two in the morning, we still haul it out.
Okay, letter C, public services. Number one, the proposed special land use will not place demands on fire, police, or other public resources in excess of current capacity. I would say it doesn't.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. Number two, the proposed special land uses will be adequately served by public or private streets, water, and sewer facilities, and refuse collection and disposal services. Let's say it's been doing good for 10 years.
Sounds, everything sounds good.
Okay.
What was that, Ron?
I said it sounds okay with me, from the description.
D, economic well-being of the community. The proposed special land use shall not be detrimental to the economic well-being of the surrounding residents, businesses, landowners, and the community as a whole. I don't think it's an issue.
Nope.
Okay. E, compatibility with natural environment. The proposed special land use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment that will create a substantially negative impact on the natural resources of the township or the natural environment as a whole. I don't think it causes any problems. Okay. F, compliance with specific standards. The proposed special land use complies with the applicable specific standards required under this ordinance. Say it does? G, conditional approvals. The planning commission may impose reasonable conditions with the approval of a special use permit pursuant to section 9.03 of this ordinance. H, performance guarantee required. I don't think that applies here.
We would just put the hours, the eight to six.
Amendment of approval of special use permits. Amendment of approved special use permit shall be permitted only under the following circumstances. The owner of property for which a special use permit has been approved shall notify the zoning administrator of any desired change to the approved special use. Minor changes may be approved by the zoning administrator upon determining that the proposed revisions will not alter the basic design and character of the special land use, nor any specified conditions opposed as part of the original approval. Minor changes shall include the following: reduction of size of the building and/or sign. B, movement of building and/or signs by no more than 10 feet. C, landscaping approved in the special use that is replaced by similar landscaping to an equal or greater extent. D, changes in floor plans that do not exceed 5% of the total floor area and which do not alter the character of a use or increase the amount of required parking. E, internal rearrangement of parking lots, which does not affect the number of parking spaces or alter access locations or design. F, changes related to item A through E above required or requested by Hayes Township, Charlevoix County, or other state or federal regulatory agencies in order to conform with other laws or regulations, provided the extent of such changes does not alter the basic design and character of the special land use, nor any specified conditions opposed as part of the original approval. G, all amendments to special land use approved by the zoning administrator shall be in writing. After approval by the zoning administrator, the applicant shall prepare a revised site plan showing the approved amendment. The revised site plan shall contain a list of approved amendments and a place for the zoning administrator to sign and date all approved amendments. Do we need to go through all this?
No.
Yeah, I think, I think, seems like we went farther than we did last time.
Yep.
Okay. So...
We're going to have a discussion.
Sure, let's... Marilyn?
I visited the site, and I sort of, I have to be honest, I was, I love all the boats, so. I was very charmed by it, but I was pleased at how clean it was. I was pleased with the types of tools that they had around, the lack of noise, and this would have been like four o'clock in the afternoon approximately when I was there. There was some odor of varnish, fresh varnish inside, but there was nothing outside. So I would caution you guys working in there all the time, you should be careful about that. I'm a physiologist, I'm a retired physiologist, so. Other than that, I mean, but I think in terms of how it fits into the community, that was my only real concern, was the materials used, the disposal, which I think we discussed, and you had a court where you solved that problem. So, I would be happy to, I would be very much in favor of granting a special use permit.
Do you have plans to expand your business, or are you just going to keep it kind of as it is, you know, in the two, in the two units that you're now occupying, is that?
The only expansion would be having more employees. We have another facility that's in Charlevoix that where we store the boats, so we only have so many that we can work on in the facility. So what we do is rotate them in and out. So if the expansion's getting bigger, no, but maybe, I mean, right now I'm looking for another employee. Five employees is pretty much our max.
So, and you're occupying now how many units?
Two.
Two as units?
Yeah.
Is it, could I ask a naive technical question?
Sure.
If you grant the special land use permit, are you granting it to the owner of the land or to the business renter?
I am seeking it for the property, so if I, if I got the special use permit, it would stay in place if I dropped in tomorrow.
I'm not worried about you, but what if you have a different business?
Well, it stays in place on the property.
It stays with the land.
Okay, it's the whole land, not just this one business.
Derek, you're joining the street jumping.
The request is for the special use permit to be granted for, to cover all 14... The request is for the special use permit to be granted for, to cover all 14 units, regardless of who the present operators are in any of the units, who the, who the present, who the present owners are, who might be the future owners or future operators. So, you know, we're not looking just at the uses and the people that are involved with it right at this time. That can change tomorrow, next week, and you could have, you know, anyone else there. Special use permit once granted goes with the land, not with the owner, and not with a specific business that's occurring at this point in time. So, you know, be aware that this could take, you know, if granted by Planning Commission, this could take place in potentially 14 units. You could have, you know, seven different companies operating, you could have 14 different companies operating.
In time, I would, in likelihood, something like that happening, of course, extremely remote. And it would not be my intention to populate an entire two buildings with one kind of business. That is bad business. I would be probably shooting myself in the foot, but there aren't, there, here are probably not seven businesses like this in northern Michigan. And certainly, they're not all going to relocate to a high building. Number two, the, the concern, of course, always is using the property the way it's designated to be used, but beyond that, it's how it's, who does it? How, how do you control the proper use of any property, not just this? And the answer is, when you, when you have owners, they tend to regulate themselves. They tend not to pollute their own property. If you have tenants, as I do in some of these cases, I watch my property. I make sure that they are respecting my property and the ground it sits on. I'm there all the time. I have every ability of doing that. And I think the same thing you said for most building owners. We do so with our own houses at home. So, it's not a, a concept that I would protect my property and the land that it sits on from abuse, but in granting a special use permit here, we're not talking about abuse. We're talking about normal use. He's displaying, oh, actually impeccably, normal use, all right? What I would define, normal use of the property, that is a respect for the real estate and a respect for the ground that it's on. And I would expect the very same of any tenant who might occupy a unit. And of course, because I have a larger interest in that building than the other owners, I would expect it of the other owners. And that's why we have an association that is formed to control the use of the, it's a condominium association, much as you have in residential condominiums. And that is built to do exactly what you might be concerned about, watch the build, watch the use of it. And that's what we do.
Thanks, Ken.
If I may...
One, one more quick last public comment and then we're gonna go...
I just, regardless of whether it's, it's, it's accepted on for just our business or the entire area, you still have a zoning ordinance that very much regulates what kind of activity can go there. So, so regardless of if there are 12 boat businesses there, they still will not be able to pollute outside of, of the regulations that were categorized as hazardous materials. So, you still very much have your zoning ordinances in place and whatever activity would go within that location, it would still have to fit under the guidelines, you know, that you have in your zoning ordinance.
Thanks, Ann, okay.
If I could just raise one final issue here because it's pertinent.
Thirty seconds, please, Ken.
Over the course of the almost 10 years, William has occupied, on occasion, four different units, okay? I would not want his business limited to just, to the two units that he happens to now be occupying because what if business expands? He needs another unit and I'm there and I've been able to rent him another unit. Well, that's, that's the way it should be. And I wouldn't want to limit him to just the two.
Okay. Thanks, Ken, all right. Close the public comments, sorry, open it up. Anybody else have any comments?
Can I ask a question for a minute? The section that you refer to that this is a use allowed was what?
It was...
Section 4.11.
Thank you.
So, are, so I'm asking this for a minute, is, are, is the use allowed that you're finding here is just carpentry?
That's what they're asking for. Any other board comment? Okay. Do we have a...
I'll make a motion that we approve the granting of the special use permit to toyboxes for carpentry or specifically to that, that section. You referred to what it was?
411.
1.11, I think it's...
H.
H, okay, I didn't have the letter.
The letter H, right. Yes, sure. It's 411, 3H, Carpentry Plumbing Electrical Sales Service and Contracting. Then we approve the granting of that permit.
Hours?
Special use permit, okay?
Yeah, special use permit.
We have a second?
I'd support that.
Set, set the hours.
Right, with the condition that it be the house of eight to six.
Mary, can...
Mary has a...
If I could make a couple of comments. The approval that took place in the past required that the uses be contained within the condominium documents recorded with Charlevoix County Registered Needs Office, which they have been. I think it would be worthwhile to contingent your approval upon that. And I would also draw for your consideration to make the approval, your approval contingent upon the approval of the Health Department.
What was the first approval again that you recommended, I'm sorry?
Approval that the condominium documents be amended and recorded with Charlevoix County Registered Needs to reflect the uses, the expanded uses that are allowed. So, that is of record for all future, you know, anyone that should acquire property in future or acquire a unit or units. And also, I feel it'd be worthwhile to contingent, make a thorough contingent upon the approval of the Health Department based on their, their approval back in 2007.
Guess I'd like to open that up to board comment then.
I don't see any problem with that.
I, the registering it, I think, makes sense. The Health Department, I'm not real sure about. I mean, if it was designed for 14 units and there are seven there...
But even if they eventually put 14, it's gotta...
It's still approved.
It's gotta be, and it's gotta be designed to handle all 14 units.
Isn't it already approved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, they've already weighed in on this, they've already had their...
Really, I don't understand the point. I guess...
That's kind of what I feel too.
I'm sorry, what did you say it was what?
Designed for 14 units and there are seven units there and it was approved for 14 units?
Larry, was there an issue with the Health Department?
Well, they, they have concerns whenever there is a change in use, particularly what is quasi-manufacturing by use.
If I may, if I may respond to that, Larry.
Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Not right now, Ken, thank you.
The Health Department approval is appendix or attached to E and F.
Is there a well on the property now? Obviously, there must be a well on the property.
For water?
That's what it looks like, correct?
Okay, the, the Health Department on November 20th of 2007, granted approval to Toyboxes Inc. for Sewers Disposal System Instruction Permit, Special Conditions. It said the permit is issued in accordance with the approved condominium subdivision plan of wastewater treatment and disposal system dated 10/3/07, developed by Performance Engineering. Number one, number two, all units are restricted to storage and limited commercial office space use only. The office space per unit is limited to approximately 600 square feet based on wastewater system design criteria submitted by the design engineer. Any use within a given unit that would generate more than 60 gallons of wastewater per day must receive prior approval from the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. The initial and replacement drain field locations are depicted on the approved condominium subdivision plan. Wastewater treatment disposal system plan shall be preserved for that use by the developer or the Subdivision Association. Initial and replacement drain field areas are to be preserved by restricting vehicular traffic filling or cutting of grade and placement of structures in those areas unless otherwise directed by the Health Department and MDEQ. Condition of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality Wastewater Construction Permit, number 1004246, shall be followed. The Condominium Association, which shall be responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the system. Floor drains that are provided in the units shall not be connected to the wastewater treatment disposal system. No waste material other than incidental snow melt or rainwater from vehicles or equipment shall be allowed to be disposed of through the drain. Vehicle wash water or other wash water shall not be disposed of through floor drains. And wastewater system installation contractor shall contact the safety and the designer engineer for final inspection prior to covering the system. The, the Health Department, when they review uses and determine the size of the field, the size of the tanks and so forth, it's based on the specific uses that are occurring. This is not a situation where we have a system handling 14 typical-sized homes. And so, it was, again, it was predicated upon the uses being restricted to storage and limited commercial office space only, with the office space being limited to 600 square feet. Now, I, I don't know the ultimate or intimate details of, of how they determine the size. I would believe it may be in part based upon the usage. So, that would be my concern and why I would want the, the Health Department to be, you know, aware of and familiar and be able to assess the, the uses that could occur in all of the units and what impact that might have on the system.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Marilyn?
Well, I, it doesn't seem to me that they're using the wastewater system except as the way any business would use it, mostly for, you know, use of a lavatory, use of a little bit of washing your hands, that kind of stuff. And so, I don't quite understand why that would come into play if, I mean, if, Larry, if you think it's gonna be an issue, I'm not opposed to adding that, but I don't, I don't really think it's, you know...
I think that it's just for this, you know, this one business, you know, in what in your operation, you know, you, you're very conscientious and you're caring about what you're doing, but then somebody else coming in might not be as respectful and maybe as cautious as you are. So, I, I see that maybe as a, a concern.
I don't see it as a concern for this one, maybe if they don't...
No, not for this one. I, I, no, I'm not saying for this one. I'm just saying for, as they expand because, you know, it's, if it expands and something changes or there's another business that comes in, that is not as considerate.
Sure, I wasn't repeating what you said. I was just saying what I feel.
Okay.
I feel for this one, it's not a big deal, but maybe if the next building gets built, maybe they should look at the septic. I don't, to me, it's an undue burden to put on them to go through that.
I would agree. I think they fall into the light office type environment and I agree it would be undue.
And I'm totally fine with registering it with the county.
I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's important.
Because then it follows, follows on with the property.
Any more, that's what I was gonna say, unless there's any more board comment.
So, I make a motion that we approve with conditions the special land use permit as proposed, including for, subject for the special use permit for section 4.11...
3H.
3H, right. Carpentry plumbing, electrical sales services and contracting orders with the following conditions, that it be filed with the board so that it'll go with the Registered Needs and also that the normal hours of operation are between eight in the morning and six in the evening.
Okay, and support?
Support.
Could we do a roll call vote or just...
Yes, it should be a roll call.
Roll call vote, please, Marlene?
Matt?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Yes?
S?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to do a site plan review with this too because we've already, nothing's changing?
I think so.
Okay, so that's it? Sweet. Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you guys for coming in and doing the right thing and having a business in Hays Township.
Thank you for the time.
And a nice tour of your shop.
Please, anybody who's spoken at any time, you stay too long, you get put to work.
I need a job in August.
Yep.
Thank you.
Glad you brought all the helpers too. You guys did good. Thank you guys.
Okay, that ends the public hearing. Public comments unrelated to the agenda?
So, the, did you say comments unrelated? I have two comments. One, we were not mentioning reservations by non-residents or seasonal residents about the change in the...
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. So, Matt earlier expressed reservations by some people that are not permanent residents or seasonal residents concerning the changes in the regulations. I hadn't heard that, but I'm sympathetic to those individuals. And the reason is that because although you've been talking about it for two years, it's only recently that you actually have a written document to discuss that is nearly finished. So, it might be worthwhile getting that, it might be distributed. And even the public church is only, we don't know how to do that. The other thing is, in this document, I looked at it online at here, it's very difficult to determine what the changes are. Particularly, it would be easy to use track changes, red line, and words to show the changes. So, even though I've read it three times, I didn't go back to the original order and put it side by side to figure out what the changes really are. That's either, well, I don't think it's purposeful, I don't think, but it's not conducive... That's either, well, I don't think it's purposeful, I don't think, but it's not conducive to open public discussion when the changes are obfuscated, not clear. And then, so that's my public comments regarding this, and things not on the agenda. And actually, I don't see it on the specifics of this. Is this under new business?
But we, when we reviewed the agenda, we took that off for tonight. We're going to have that on our meeting on the twenty-fourth, I believe it is.
But that's the public hearing?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so comments specifically related to this aren't appropriate now?
Well, it is public comment unrelated to agenda items, so since we took it off the agenda, technically, yes, I guess it's a good time.
I do have some questions that may be easy to answer or have no answer. If you look at section three K one, it's on the third page of the document. It starts by saying any and all permanent replacement, including the shoreline protection strip. Only soil or rocks consistent with the composition of the pre-existing onsite soil.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
I don't make when you get there.
Yeah.
Again, where is it?
It's the top of the third page.
Third page?
And it's item, he's got, he's got both sides, he has a page, so it's, it's second text.
Oh, this is a different, yeah, you're looking at one, not the same one. Is that the page of text?
Third page of text.
Does it have the pictures on it with the?
That's the second page of the text.
Okay, so the next page after that.
Right, and one we have, we just got, you know, with a couple of non-substantive changes down here.
I just have one of those here.
So this is the one you're talking about? This page?
You know, the next page.
Okay, all right, all right, now.
That's K one.
Any and all fill material place?
Right.
Okay.
Then it says at the end, placement of beach sand is prohibited. What if that's the original composition? Composition of the pre-existing onsite, you have soil or rocks, what if it's beach sand?
If, if it's, if it was originally, there are areas, unlike Charlevoix, that are beach sand, that are naturally sandy. And there are areas that are not naturally sandy. What we're saying is you can't bring in beach sand. We're not saying-
Well, if you have to, if you have to remediate, right, if you have to do a site review and there was beach sand?
And there was beach sand, all right, and-
Then you can bring in beach sand.
No.
No, that's what it says. There was beach sand there, you put an addition onto your home and you have to have a review, and you have to remediate that fifty-foot strip, which was beach sand, now you can't put beach sand.
Why would you want to bring more beach sand in?
Because that's what was originally there, and you're required to remediate, but you can't remediate to it's-
You can remediate it to what it was before.
That's-
What, what that is intended to be, is that you can't-
I know that, I'm sure I know what it was intended to mean, but that's not what it says. And where you say only soils or rocks consistent with the composition of the pre-existing onsite soil and rocks shall be allowed, I get it, but then if it's originally sand, you can do everything except bring sand in.
I think soil, they're saying, sand or gravel or-
Right.
And, so beach sand is different than soil?
Beach sand would be one type of soil.
Okay, but you're not allowed to put that there?
That wouldn't be my interpretation, but-
It says explicitly, beach placement of beach sand is prohibited.
The end.
I think, again, what they're saying is if it wasn't sand to begin with, you can't bring sand in.
I understand.
Yeah.
But that's not what it says.
That's what it says to me.
That's what it says to me, too.
Okay, you'll hear about it.
All right, all right, okay, fair enough, but I'm just telling you, everything I've ever seen on the lake is bringing in beach sand, where there was no beach sand. And what happens is that when the lake level changes, it washes out until the lake.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
And that's the reason against it.
So in, under section four, same page, where native shoreline vegetation did not exist, you're required to re-vegetate that strip?
Yes.
Even though there was never anything there?
That was not the case. There's not any area where there was never anything unless it was solid rock.
What says right here, where native shoreline vegetation did not exist?
It means that it did not exist at the time of the, at the time of review of the, of the shoreline protection strip. Are you an attorney?
He was an attorney, no question.
I mean, I, I-
It's, it's, I mean, you're making a valid point.
I just haven't understood it yet.
Well, and it's, I think everybody is interpreting what is being read differently. So, you know, maybe that needs to be cleaned up, just like the sand.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, this is a-
No, I mean, it's, you're raising a valid question that somebody down the road's going to say, well, wait a minute.
Exactly.
Okay, so, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
All right, so, those are, those, I-
Well, by you bringing that-
Oh, now.
Your interpretation, right.
Right.
Right, and that's-
And I don't know if that's new, or that's always been there in the ordinance, because it's not clear what's changed and what hasn't changed.
Well, the sand thing, if I remember, when, you know, how many years back did we start all of this, was the fact that, and again, maybe we went in with blinders on, thinking, you know, this guy's got grass, and now he wants to bring in beach sand. And that's what we're trying to stop, was natural vegetation being eliminated and replaced with sand.
That I understand.
Right.
I mean, that's arguable as well, right? I mean, one can argue that in principle, that, you know, it's their property, they can, you, they can bring in beach sand if they want, and you're saying, no, that's fine, but here it's just not clear what you're saying. So I'm not raising this because I'm against it, but I can't follow it.
Clarification, yes.
Okay, what the original said, that I see, is, no, actually, this was in the original, where native shoreline vegetation does not exist, the combination of native vegetation shall, that was in the original, that was point D, under three, under section three foot one four, there it is. Yeah, three foot one four waterfront regulations, in the original design order that was passed, that was eliminated in January of two thousand and sixteen.
So if I have beach sand, and I planted grass over it, and I modified my house, and it's really grass, but I can't put beach sand?
All of that, including the beach sand, one says the same thing as this says as well. All right, so, so maybe we should clean that up, and I appreciate that.
And, and you should make explicit changes, what's changed from the old one.
Well, we've done this before in the past, but if people come to the meeting and they don't have the old one, it's very confusing to see these written in three different colors.
I'm not sure if it's confusing or not. I've done this a dozen times, having the changes explicit, I don't think it confuses anybody, but it should have been done in the past. And I've been reading these four versions of this, and I still can't follow it.
Okay, well, the-
It's just a point of information for you, so, and I'm sympathetic to those who are joining the process late.
Thank you. Larry?
Mr. Chair, the purpose of the public comment is for the public to make comments as opposed to getting into a dialogue or a debate.
You're right.
Or, I think what would be appropriate is to, you know, hear any additional comments Mr. Kimmy has, thank him for the comments, and then the planning commission can consider those, you know, at a later date, either later tonight or a later date, but, you know, I think, that's certainly some things that, you know, the planning commission and I as zoning administrator will take a look at prior to the public hearing, because we can back for some language, but, again, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear the public's comments, not-
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that. Any other public comments?
Can I ask a public question? Okay, so carpentry was just added as a special use. Do you have a definition of what carpentry is? Because as we started to discuss, what could this expand into, is it defined?
It's not, if you-
Yeah, I'm going to say goodbye.
And here I go, I'm getting into a conversation like we just talked about.
That's why I asked, I asked a question.
Let me answer your questions. No, we can't.
Is that a bit of an answer?
It's all that says for carpentry, it just says carpentry, plumbing, and electrical sales and services. Other things that are in the use for special use are gasoline service station, drive-through windows, adult daycare, group foster facilities, nursing home, building material sales, those type of things. You bet. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, we will close public comment, unrelated to the agenda items. And we scratched new business for tonight, so no new business, approval of minutes from the September seventeenth, two thousand and seven meeting. Got too many pieces of paper in front of me tonight.
And to answer your question, we, we don't have a definition for carpentry.
Okay.
Any comments on the minutes?
I read them twice, and I'm trying to remember.
I have just a couple. Could we put also present Marlene Gulliverich, recording secretary, instead of just secretary? And there's a period at the end of secretary that could come out between secretary and and. And right about the middle of the page where it says section three point one four D point three, it says if there is a tree in the shortest distance, that's what I think it should be, instead of in the shortest distant, and I believe when we answered that during our meeting is yes, so I'd also like to have yes after that. Marlene, I know you spoke a couple of times at the last meeting, and I didn't see your comments in here, your name in here, speaking anywhere?
Because I do them as public comments, so they're listed under public comment, and I don't list anybody else's name in public comment either.
Anybody else, anything else they'd like to add?
Motion to approve?
Make a motion we approve them as corrected.
Sir?
Support?
In favor?
Mm-hmm.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Township Board Representative report.
Last Township Board meeting was October ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Under new business, we looked at our fee schedule and changed, we're going to charge twenty-five dollars per hour for the zoning administrators' time. We talked about vacations, that everybody should have one, you'll just have to make up to work when you're done, or when you're back. We look, we need to start looking at roads, and what road projects are pertinent, what's coming up. Brown had a list to start with, to start looking at Susan Shores, Bayshore West, Burnett Road, Maple Grove Road, and Murray Road.
Is this for paving, repaving, or what?
I was told to drive them and see what I think of those roads and report back, or each, each board member was, and, and what priority of need they be. So I have not done that yet.
Okay, now you're serious.
I can't comment on any of those roads yet. Snow removal, hall snow removal, they accepted an agreement from B and G Enterprises for the snow removal of the hall this winter, and the hall cleaning position became open, and we decided to advertise it in the Potatowski News and on the Township Pub page, and that was the business.
Thank you.
Also, Ron Dan Z wrote commentary, I gave it to everybody, do I need to read it, or can everybody read it themselves?
We can read it.
That's everything I have.
All right, thanks, Matt. Anybody have any questions for Matt? Okay, zoning administrator report?
Okay, September was a little slow in terms of zoning permits, only one was issued. However, there was a number of other activities that kept me busy. We had a, we had an application for land division, again, I'm waiting for balance of information to be able to process that. The, it looks like there, maybe another one coming down the pipe, nuisance complaints. The, was contacted regarding rats in the Bayshore area, the four-legged ones, not two-legged. The, I did check the Health Department, and they stated that if they received a complaint, they would best to make sure that, they would not be spending time on it, and it's definitely outside the scope of the township nuisance ordinance, so.
Somebody has seen rats?
Yeah, well, actually caught one.
Say that's pretty good.
Cat caught one and killed it, but, you know. Brady Graham's done his own ongoing zoning violation. It was hearing scheduled district court on October third, Mr. Graham did not show, so there was a bench warrant placed for his arrest, and a, a fine has been, is being assessed. Just received an email today from Brian Graham's office that Mr., that Brian Graham, the Township Attorney as opposed to Brady Graham, that Brady Graham has retained an attorney and that he would be presenting himself at Charlevoix County Jail for arrest or whatever they do, and the attorney would be present, probably post-bail or whatever is framed, and then deal with, deal with this in court. It's encouraging to see that Mr. Graham has retained legal counsel, which probably could have prevented a lot of the things we've dealt with to this point had he been represented by competent counsel. The, Bob DeRoz, has presented a restoration plan for the Pierce property, which is located on Indian Trails. I'm in the process of reviewing that. And I actually, he sent a second revised plan, and it's the revised plan that I'm in the process of reviewing. From what I can see, it does not comply with the ordinance requirements. It may, or at least components of it may, if the shoreline protection strip language is amended as is proposed, but I have to go with what is, what's in the zoning ordinance right now, as opposed to what might be in the ordinance at some point in future. Also had some issues with Mr. Featherly regarding the approved site plan for his property. I did send him a letter, I've met with him once, and have had some additional conversations with him over the phone. Again, we've, the Toy Boxes Inc. property, which came before you tonight. Generally, I find that September, October, the zoning permit activity kind of spikes up where it is builders are getting things lined up to get them through the winter. I haven't seen that as of yet, but I have had some discussions with a couple of contractors that lead me to believe that some, we may see some additional activity. One is for the Sutton property on Virgus Road. They're looking at building a arena, horse arena. And I did talk to the builder today, or at least an agent for the construction company. And he wanted to know if they were allowed to have apartments for the employees on the second floor. And I, he kind of, he called me downtown and I wasn't in it, I didn't have the ordinance with me, so I wasn't able to respond. Told him I'd be looking into that tomorrow when I would get with him. Again, for a long time, it's been spent with Chuck Laisher regarding his woodcraft products. And again, just a lot of time going through the Toy Boxes files and getting material ready for the planning commission. I did attend the September Planning Commission and Township Board meeting. And also attended the Michigan Community of Mapping Professionals Conference of White Mountain last month. And they had an individual from U.S. Census that was present. And they're, they're gearing up for the 2020 census. And the time is ripe. If the township, if local units of government want to get involved in checking the addresses that the census is using to mail out or hand-deliver their, their census questionnaires.
What is BSNA?
That's a software program.
Does it mean anything, BS?
Well, I, I have never seen, maybe it does, I, I don't know, but I always see BSNA.
I've seen abbreviations in the-
Yeah, that's, that's the assessing software that's used in a township. It's used pretty much throughout Charleboy County. And, and they did talk about some things that I, I think I'll find beneficial in going through and using that program. And again, I, Lisa Abney, the township assessor, has been making some information available to me on computer and to the BSNA program. And I, I do want to sit down with her and kind of go over what the exact information is and how I access it and ways that I can utilize it. Some of the information that will be included will be some of her worksheets or some of the diagrams that she puts on when she goes out and checks the property.
Who, who is the assessor now?
Lisa Abney. She's from the Whitewater Township area, kind of in the vicinity of, well, apparently she lives a little bit north of M-72, north of Williamsburg on, just off Alflake Road. If you ever take the shortcut to down there.
But she has taken over Hayes Township?
Well, I would say she's been, she's been hired to do the assessing. I don't think she's had a coup or taken over. Yeah, could happen, but to this day it isn't. So that's kind of where we stand with the zoning minister's report.
The only comment I'd throw out is, you know, did anybody tell the Suttons there's a great arena sitting there vacant a little further up the road?
Didn't mention it to them. The, and they're also in the process of building a hangar at the airport and so forth. And so I think we'll probably see a lot of the, a lot of activity. I, some of the early plans that I've seen, and I have not seen anything recently, it looks like some fairly extensive agricultural development in terms of horse facilities, barns, riding arena and so forth will be occurring at the property.
Is that on the, that's on the right side of the road, sure, that's on the-
Yes, if you leave the township, Paul.
So the west, the west or north side of the road?
West, west.
Yeah. Where the, there's a house, I think it's blue, it's yellow house, where they just built a garage. And they took down the old, oh.
Lots of that.
Lots of that thing. Yeah, well, it's, that's part of the Sutton property. And actually, I think they call it Great Lakes Investments or something of that nature. This is gonna be just a little bit north of the house because they did divide the property and so it'll be on a, on a, with these.
But, but on that vacant piece, not as far north as the next house that's a ways off the road?
Right, yeah, I'd be sure of that. But there, from what I can see, there's gonna be some fairly substantial things happening.
I think they're, they're really missing a bit. I mean, they've got horse farms and arenas and living quarters and everything. Sitting right in Bay Harbor vacant.
The, you know, it, it seems like the, the horse industry or the, you know, is kind of moving into Hayes Township. We do have a couple of people that just, Pincherry have just applied or applied over the last few months for zoning permits to build barns in which to keep their horses and to feed and so forth, so. And this one person told me, I said, you know, buy horses. And she said, "Cheaper than children, you don't worry about where your car is on Friday." No wedding bills, if they have offspring, you can sell them.
I don't know, we had horses. I'll take kids anytime. For one thing, the kids grow up and they can feed themselves, the horses, they have to keep feeding more.
I've seen a number of people in my neighborhood, this kid, whose kids have moved back home, bringing grandkids with them. That's getting off the topic.
Larry, have you seen what is going on on the Fetherly property? Like yesterday and today and?
No, I have not been up by there in the last two days. He's supposed to be putting in the fence. And he's required to put in landscaping, there's some shrubbery and landscaping as well. I have talked to him, he has been, he said he was pricing fencing material and he was gonna get that in this fall. I have checked with, and I don't have her name on my fingertips, but I was contacting Corporate Extension in Austin, Boyne City and asked to speak to someone, if they could direct me to someone who has some knowledge and expertise in, in landscaping and, you know, shrubbery and whatnot. And so I called, left a message, the woman called me back. She said, "Spring is really the preferred time to be planting our shrubbery and whatnot." So, you know, my thought is, is that, you know, I don't want, I want the fence in this fall. You know, I, I guess I, I won't feel real bad if the shrubbery doesn't get in until spring. It would probably give it a lot better opportunity to survive. And, and it's gonna be pulling teeth on some of that anyhow. So I'm gonna focus, get the fencing in and move on to the next item. Can you elaborate as well?
Well, there were two of the light-bottom trailers that they use for large asphalt runs. It looked like a staging area for whatever they were either unloading or being loaded. It didn't look like anything to do with landscaping to me.
Okay, I have not seen that, we'll go and take a look at that tomorrow morning. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else for Larry? Nice work, thank you. Old business, we'll pass on that for tonight unless anybody really wants to talk about it. Public hearing dates?
Excuse me. I have nothing, no one has approached me for anything to look for at a public hearing.
Okay, our next planning commission meeting will be October 24th.
That's a public, the planning commission meeting will be November 21st.
So-
It's a public hearing.
Okay, so that's a public hearing.
I mean, a public, township, township's thing.
Township hearing.
Township public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, it is a planning commission hearing. The planning commission is holding a hearing, not the township board.
Right, but it's a mem, it's a-
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing for the entire township.
What was the date of that again?
The 24th.
I read from tonight.
Seven o'clock.
But our next planning commission meeting is-
It's November 21st.
Thank you.
What date was that, please?
November 21st.
Two days before Thanksgiving.
Any planning commission comment? I just had one little thing, and this is why I asked to have recording secretary added to the minutes. We have one sheet here, memorandum, and it has Pat as the vice chair and secretary. And then, is that? It has me as the chair, so. And then we have another document that has Marilyn as the planning commission secretary and Marlene as the recording secretary. And then the next page has Marlene as the planning commission secretary.
I have the planning commission secretary.
Yeah, so, see on this one it has Pat.
Yeah, I saw that, I just, you know, originally when I was chairperson, Pat was the-
Yeah, it's an easy fix.
It just didn't switch.
Yeah, and then on this one it has you as the planning commission secretary. And then on this one it has Marlene as the planning commission secretary. It just came out in our packet this week.
Yeah, but there's been a lot of-
A lot of information to be- This is for, it's for the Toy Box.
Is that something I would have generated or?
I think so, does this look like it? Well, yeah, I'm pretty sure it did.
Yeah.
Yes, from Larry Sullivan.
That one came from you, but these two didn't come from you, I don't think.
Okay, no, those would not have come from me. Okay. Yeah, that, this one here did come from me. That's the, it's kind of the standard letterhead I've been using.
Do you want to see those?
Thank you.
On that note, I would make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
All right, second.
All in favor? Anything written for us?